All right.
Yep.
I'll be Janeburg 2022, U S D three fifty, Board of Education meeting the order. First up, election of President and Vice President. So we'll open nominations.
I'd like to nominate Derek Foot for President again.
Sir. I move nomination cease.
We have a second?
A second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, nomination cease. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Oppose side, same sign. Motion carried. Vice President.
I move Carl Berra as Vice President.
Second. Nomination cease.
Nomination cease, please.
All right. Nomination cease. All those in favor for Carl Berra as Vice President? Say aye. All right. Oppose side, same. Motion carried. All right. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
No. Whenever Gary Seacrest signs on, just go to him. So might draw off order a bit, but.
Come on.
Nothing.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye. All right. Oppose side, same. Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing to report out of the ordinary on consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye. All right. Oppose side, same. Motion carried. All right. Covid protocols.
I'm sure that before the new year, CDC came out with guidance lowering the quarantine and isolation period basically to five days. So if you tested positive for Covid or you were exposed to someone with Covid, you need to stay home for five days. And if you don't have any symptoms, day six, you're free to go back to school, work, and all that. Then over the break, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment gave us guidance and said, well, that doesn't apply to schools. So we're kind of caught in the middle of, well, what are we supposed to do then? Our health department has said they're going to follow CDC guidelines. And K D H, he said that doesn't apply. Well, you can imagine that's going to be a weird situation when the health department says this child no longer needs to quarantine, but we have to tell them you can't come to school. So the best guidance I have right now, I think, from our health department is that we follow basically the CDC guidelines. They've been saying they're going to come up, come out with updated guidance for schools, but talked to Shannon a few times and they're kind of confused as well. So essentially what we'd be doing is doing a five-day isolation period. So if somebody tests positive, if they have no symptoms on day six, they can come back. If they're a close contact, that quarantine period is five days. As long as they don't have symptoms, they can come back on day six. Now, they can still come to school with our test to stay program during that five-day period. It also changes our household contact situation where if a child lives in the house and somebody was positive for Covid in that household, they need to stay home for five days. There's not an option to test during that period. So they stay home for five days, then they can come to school and test for five days. So without having real clear guidance, other than informal visits and emails with the health department, I don't have a sheet to show you like on page twenty-one that has the most updated information from the CDC explaining that whole five-day quarantine period. But even here, it says it does not apply to schools. But we don't have any information that says, well, this is what schools should do. So my recommendation would be we just follow what the health department says as far as quarantine and isolation orders, which is that, basically the CDC guidelines. And then if something were to change, then we would follow the health department guidelines with however they would change them. And I think that's our best course of action. So that would be my recommendation that this board take action to follow Stafford County Health Department guidelines for quarantine and isolation. I have no idea why the CDC and K D H got together and said, how can we make it harder on the schools to do their job and make it more confusing? They did that, but I feel comfortable with the situation.
Now, would they have to test after the five days?
No.
Okay.
No requirement for testing after that five days.
What did we see after the Christmas break?
Not a lot. We have, I'm not even sure that we have any student cases right now. We have a few families that have it in their households, a few kids gone because of that. We've not seen anything as far as in-school spread or issues.
What are the other two school districts doing in there, Ken?
I don't know the answer to that.
So after they come back after five days, are there any requirements, masks or anything like that?
Masks, yeah.
For how long is that?
Five. So the total ten-day quarantine period was what it was. Were a mask for that second five days when they're back.
Unless they locked it out of it?
Yeah, that's a good question. We hadn't talked about that.
What if they come back and they're not supposed to be contagious? Is there a reason to have them wear the mask? Is that something we can entertain or how?
Yeah, I think we can do whatever we think is the right thing to do. I mean, I guess I'm.
If they're letting them come back, you're letting them?
Yes, if they're not contagious, then they should. If they're contagious, they should be here. So I guess that's the issue.
I mean, I have a hard time having a kid, if he's able to come back to school, wear a mask if he's already done the five days.
Yeah.
My opinion.
I agree with that.
Yeah. And that's what makes it difficult with this and about having clear guidelines from every. I don't like this muddy water situation, but.
I feel we're just going to clarify. Quarantine, five days, no requirements when you come back.
Right.
Provided their fever and everything.
Yeah, there's no symptoms, yeah.
I'll make that form of a motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we follow the local health department's guidance, correct? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose side, same. Motion carried. Okay. Principal contract.
You do have a copy of principal contract, page twenty-two. Nothing to report here, just going to ask you all to approve rolling over Mr. White's contract. It's two-year contract at the next meeting. So if there's issues we need to discuss with the contract, we can discuss that here. Otherwise, we can discuss any personnel issues in closed session. Last check, I had four applicants for the elementary principal position. Some possibilities there.
Okay. Strategic planning, we'll skip.
Any checks here, Gary?
Okay. Meeting dates.
We need to reaffirm the meeting dates, and I was just going through last night and realized our March board meeting date was on spring break, which makes it very difficult to get to do. So I think we need to move that one. My recommendation would be to go one week later, just change that one to the twenty-first. And that's not reflected on your.
And was there another date? You had any questions?
February, we have a home ballgame that night. We could easily move that one a week later or do it earlier in the day, allow folks to go to that ballgame.
Want me to just put them both on the twenty-first of February, March?
Okay. You guys comfortable with that?
I'll make that a form of motion then. But move the January meeting from the.
The February.
Or excuse me, the February meeting from the fourteenth to the twenty-first, and then in March, move that from the fourteenth to the twenty-first.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we move the February and March meetings to the twenty-first. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Oppose side, same. Motion carried. Okay. He's wiping the.
I'm wiping.
Strategic planning.
Hi, Gary.
Hello, Mr. Meyer.
I've got the whole group here.
Okay.
Most of us, we've got a couple missing, but we're talking about the need for some more strategic planning. You know, we have our board goals we set every year, but you know, we've kind of put this off. We've had that Quavira water rights issue kind of hanging over our heads, and Lord knows how long that's going to go on, but I feel we need to, we need to have a strategic plan in place for future of our school district. I thought it'd be good for you to share what you all do as K S B in that process, and I'll just turn it over to you.
Right, thank you very much, and thank you, Board, for allowing me to spend a couple of minutes with you. We have a long-term planning process that we've used extensively throughout the state. We'll get down to brass tacks. For a size of district, it would be thirty-five hundred dollars plus my travel to and from your district. This would require two sessions. It includes patrons, staff, and your administrators and the board. The perfect number would be approximately seven tables, that way a board member's at every table. And then at that table, you would have a mix of community members and staff certified, classified. And I know you don't have seven administrators, but your administrators would be within that. We're talking about your building administrators. Your superintendent would be a little bit footloose and fancy-free that night as a resource. The first meeting starts with the superintendent discussing with the group the state of the district, and the state of the district addressed may have anything to do with the facilities, enrollment trends, transportation fleet, learning, anything that you think might be pertinent to information that would be needed to be a good long-range planning. So Josh, for an example, you may have the first fifteen to twenty minutes. From that point, it's brought to me, and then we ask a lot of questions. There's a lot of activities that each of the groups is working at, at each of the tables. And the first night is just a compilation of a whole bunch of ideas. And we'll have a pretty good idea at the conclusion of the first night, what your common themes are that has come up through that process. The second night then would be me reviewing what information was compiled with the group, the whole group, so they would be there two different nights. And then we give them an opportunity to start writing down and recording potential ideas for goals and what it might look like to get there. So the conclusion of the activity, which is two nights with a good group of individuals, there would be a booklet produced based upon all of the information that would be presented to the board and your superintendent. Typically, the board at that point hands it off to your superintendent and says, all right, build some coals off of these common themes. So it is a great way to build consensus. I said a perfect is seven different tables, seven groups. If you have six to a table, we're talking forty-two individuals. That is seven board members. And so you get a wide range of opinions and ideas. I do not come in with any preconceived ideas of what needs to occur in St. John. That's done through the group that's been identified by the board. So two visits to your community. I live in central Kansas, so it's not a long trip to your community. Each of those meetings is approximately two and a half hours long, so there would be five hours of intensive work by your group that's been identified. I produce, like I said, a document. I did send one to Mr. Meyer. I'm not sure if it's available, but if you'd like to see at least of a representative sample of what's produced, a conclusion of that two-work, he may have that as a document for you to observe at some point. So, Mr. Meyer, I'll just open it up if you have any questions or any other board members, and feel free to ask.
The two sessions, the timing of those, I assume we need some time between those two nights?
Yes. It'd be great to have at least a week. That gives me some time to get all that information compiled. It does not have to be a week. I wouldn't want to go much further out because then the momentum can be lost between the first and the second meeting, and you want to have those individuals engaged as you possibly can. So approximately a week between the two meetings is what we would recommend. That gives me an opportunity to get all that information put together so that I can make an informed report at the second meeting. And also, Josh, I did not mention that, I'm not sure, I haven't had one of these. These are usually evening meetings where there would be a meal provided, so I'm just going to say, let's say the meeting starts at five-thirty. Everybody can start showing up at five or five-fifteen, grab a plate, and head to their table. We do ask that there is assigned seating. That way you don't get six high school teachers at the same table because you want to be patrons, board member, high school, middle school. You want to mix at each table so you have diverse opinions.
As far as selecting the individuals, what do you usually see? Do we handpick certain people or open it up to the general public?
Yeah, you usually handpick. If you open it up, you don't really have any idea of how many. A lot of boards have chosen to do it this way, that each board member might present six or seven names, send out invitations, make sure they know this is a two-day commitment or a two-event commitment. But you can also do it as a board, that we want to invite our site council. The boards, a lot of times, would say, superintendent, you decide on the staff that you would like to represent each of the buildings or the classified staff. Leave that up to the admin. But the community, the board has a pulse on the community. Site council members are great participants if you have an active site council. Those individuals have already shown their commitment to your school district, so they're great represented in that group. I've got two scheduled in February, a district in, a medium-sized district in central Kansas and a larger district in the western half of the state, that we're doing two of those in February. You also have to kind of decide on your timing. March is not bad, except it's spring break, so you'd have to work around that. If you wait too much later than that, then you've got spring activities, and I know that's really busy, so it's hard to get patrons a lot of times or activity or coaches that you want to be there. So timing is of interest, I would assume, on your scheduling.
You guys have any questions?
I think I do want to do it in February to March.
If you wait later.
February, March. Be pretty busy.
Yeah.
Mr. Meyer, if you say that you have a pretty good feel that you want this, I could send you some potential days to choose first session and some potential days to choose the second session. That way you don't waste a lot of your time saying, we want it on these two days. And I'd say I'm already somewhere at those nights, so I'd be happy to do that for it. I may not be able to get them to you right now for your board meeting, but I could definitely get some dates out to you there pretty quick.
Sure, sure. Is it something we want to do as a board?
I'm waiting.
Okay. All right, well, let's do that. Gary, you send me some dates, and we'll, I'll get back with the board, and we'll see if we can nail down time here in.
All right.
February or March and move ahead.
Okay, well, thank you very much, appreciate your time, and if you, I'm looking forward to working with you. It's a good, it's a good process, and I think something that you all will definitely benefit from. Thank you, Mr. Meyer, for the invitation.
Yeah, thanks, Gary.
All right. So Nelson, Bates, and then we can start up the planning and anything else you want to discuss today?
No, I don't think so. I think that direction.
All right. Board member activities and reports.
I don't have any.
I don't. Nothing for you.
Administrative.
Mr. White.
First of all, thank you, guys, appreciate what you do. I think January's Board Recognition or Appreciation Day. I was hoping I'd be the hero and be the only one that remembered, but evidently not. It was a pretty good looking pick here. But anyway, I appreciate the support you guys give us and Mr. Meyer and I have had from you guys, especially over these past couple of years when it's been so not, you know, not normal. So thank you, I do appreciate you. Just as a kind of reminder, the state of Kansas requires that every student in grades eight through twelve have what's called an individual plan of study. And that individual plan of study is just kind of that, each student does a career interest inventory, kind of some skills-based stuff, some learning styles. They also compile work experience, work-based experience that they might have here in school or like a summer job or anything, and it kind of builds as they go through. So we're required to do that in grades eight through twelve. We actually started in seventh grade, just to get them going. And I know I've talked to you about this before, we don't visit a lot, but those students, it belongs to that student. So even when they leave, we use a platform called Zello. Used to be Career Cruising. Career Cruising got bought by Zello, but it kind of acts as a resume as they go off into either jobs or college opportunities or whatever. It's really a benefit to students, and we continue to grow in that and try and improve that. Last year, for the first year, we had seniors present their portfolios at the end of the year. We didn't advertise it as much as we should, but those will be open to the public. But when students become seniors, part of what it involves is students being able to get in front of a group and present what they've done, what their certifications might be in, whether they have Microsoft Office certifications or nursing certifications or whatever it might be. And so that oral presentation's a big part of that. We do that, a lot of that's done through their English classes because it fits into that curriculum. So with that being said, toward the end of this year, we'll kind of make a bigger thing of advertising out there and inviting public into that. We're not sure what the format will be. Last year, we did it during the school day, but it's one of those things that's really good for kids, helps with their career development. It starts off with career exploration, goes all the way up through college and career planning, which can include also doing the financial aid pieces and stuff. So with that said, part of the interest inventories that we get, we look at and determine if we need to try to add something to our curriculum that students are interested in or that we might be able to drive more interest. And it's hard to believe, but the end of this month, more likely the beginning of February, probably around February tenth, we'll open up enrollment for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So we'll look at this data from the IPSs to kind of determine if we need to add stuff. And we will be, we will be adding some stuff for sure in the business department. We'll see where we're at with the facts, with Mrs. Patterson's replacement or whatever, but we could make some changes in there to kind of gear towards student interest. And then the students can actually use, you know, they can refer to their IPS and say, well, I want this career. These are the classes that help me the most, whether it be residential carpentry or whether it be, you know, statistics class through Martin County or whatever. Every three years, St. John hosts the county spelling bee. This is our year. We go up through eighth grade with the spelling bee, so on January twenty-sixth, we'll have the spelling bee here. You guys will be, I assume we'll have, be able to have it open for public can come in, so look forward to that. In a week, in a little bit, we have Midwinter Classic. It's going to be kind of a hectic time around here, and if you guys want to volunteer for anything, I think we have plenty for people to do. You guys are going to do the contest stuff, right? You'll have people.
I will be able to this year.
Yeah, so we're looking for somebody to take care of the three-point contest. Anybody wants to help with those or do run the free throw contest?
But as things are, things are settling in, I think we've got everything ready to go, barring any, any health emergencies that we might run into, but we're going to assume that's not going to happen. So we'll be every day, Monday through Saturday, except for Wednesday. Saturday, we'll start at ten-thirty, and we'll be done at ten at night, probably. It'll be a long day. But it'll be a fun day. Junior high basketball's coming to an end quicker than you'd think, and I say this, we're, it seems like January just started, we're almost halfway through already. February third is the last day of our CPL junior high basketball tournament, so that season's wrapping up. High School Scholars Bowl Regionals is February third, so we've got a lot of these winter activities that are coming to an end. I've always encouraged, you know, I think we need to have activities that every kid can be involved in, so if there's a, if we can find a sponsor for an activity or somebody has an idea and we have student interest, I always encourage it. Mrs. Mixon came to Mr. Meyer and I and asked if she could start a technology club, and she's applied for some grants, and I think we're close to the approval on some of the grant stuff to get some technology. And she had about, I don't know, eight or ten kids that were interested in a technology club. They'll just do that during the school day, it won't interfere with anything else, it'll be during our LS time, but just another opportunity for our students to be able to, to be involved in something that drives those interests and might actually, you know, lead them into a career somewhere. So we'll be having our trap shooting sign-up here pretty soon. We're having a meeting this Wednesday to kind of figure out funding. We're short on funding right now because we're probably going to have around twenty-five kids sign up. That's going to cost us about ten thousand, maybe a little north of ten thousand dollars to have ammo for all those kids if we are able to do it to where it doesn't cost. But we're about halfway there right now, but we'd like to have an operating budget. So you'll see some fundraising stuff for that trap team, but it's exciting that we have twenty to twenty-five kids out there. Again, that's just another activity they can be involved in. This next week, grades six, eight, ten, and twelve, every year we give the Communities of Care Survey, and we're going to be administering that this week or next. Talked to you last month a little bit about the social, emotional learning needs of students and stuff, and this is just another measure. So parents have to opt their student in. We do a form enrollment. If the parent says no or doesn't answer, we don't give that kid the survey. But we have really close to everybody that agreed to participate. It does give us some good information. The one thing, just so, if anybody asks you guys, we get zero information on individuals. Everything is about how this grade level scored or our school scored versus state Everything is about how this grade level scored, or our school scored, versus state stuff, so it's totally anonymous. We can't track the kid down and say, "We know that you said that you used drugs four times in the past week," or whatever. So if anybody asks and has a concern with it, we have absolutely no, no tracking on that. And again, we'll use that additional data to combine with our ABCs and SRSS, that you guys don't remember what means probably, but. Really focusing on, on the social-emotional learning needs of our students, so. Any questions on any of that? Okay, thank you guys, I appreciate you very much.
Mr. Meyer?
School calendar, we got memo out to parents, letting them know about the added two days at the end of the year, just so everybody can plan accordingly. And then, here in April, we'll revisit that, if we don't need those two days, if we don't need to use them up. We'll determine what we need to do at that point. As far as decisions about closing school, I had a couple of questions about how much time do we miss? If we do a late start, well, we don't, we don't lose any time. If we have a regular scheduled full day of school, and we start two hours late, we count all that time. So we don't use that to make those decisions about, about canceling schools, based on student and staff safety. Already mentioned the spelling bee, capital outlay budget, we're in a lot better shape than I had anticipated, starting the year. Our beginning balance, after everything was said and done, that we did not spend last year considerably higher in our, on our beginning balance. And then the revenue. Expecting more revenue also, with increase in valuation. So, all in all. I did add the copier lease, we've been taking that out of capital outlay, I just didn't have it in this, this budget. So, with our budget as planned, we should be about, you know, eighty-five thousand dollars in better shape than I had anticipated. So, that's positive news there. Take care of some needs, so I may come to you with some ideas of additional needs there that we could try to address. Our daycare situation, the bank has agreed to donate that building, I think I've mentioned that to you, we're in the process of getting that all, all the legal side of things done. I'd hope to have a request for proposals to send out, to get a daycare provider. I don't have all that wording, but I'm gonna get that out as soon as I can. I'll try to send it to you all before I send it out, so you know what's coming, but basically, it's just gonna say, you know, ask for a budget, and have people explain. You know, their philosophy of daycare, and get, we'll get somebody recruited, and then we'll still have a little bit of work, even after we select a provider, a little work on the facility. So I thought that'd be better, to get a provider in place, and they can tell us, "Well, I'd like a sink in this area," or. We know we're gonna have to do some of those things, but before we put any effort into the building, having an idea from the person that's actually gonna run the daycare.
On that same, is that because the fire marshal got back with their recommendations?
They've approved the plan on paper, and I was concerned about the, the interior of the building is wood paneling, and I know that's kind of a no-no with fire marshal. We have some situations here at the school where we have wood paneling, and if too much of the wall is flammable materials, then it needs to be replaced. But they said, "If we're not making big changes, you know, we're not remodeling the building, we don't need to change that." So, if we would ever do a substantial remodel of the building, then you need to fit with strict fire code. So that was one thing, I didn't know how that would work out, but they said, "No, if we're not changing it, then it stays." So I think, I feel good about that, we're in good shape. We have put the smoke alarms in, I had Davis do that, that needed to be done, so. School board appreciation, I thank you all for serving on the board, and always, I hear some horror stories in other districts, and having rough issues with school boards, and I appreciate working for you guys. So, thank you. One area of improvement, I didn't have this on my bulleted list, but we're gonna have a standing meeting with, with administrative staff, you know, like our food service director, transportation. Maintenance, custodial, office staff, just a standing meeting, you know, sometimes in our little district, we, we talk frequently, but not formally, and sometimes the ball gets dropped. So to help with our communication, we're gonna meet weekly with everybody, and hopefully help that communication process, so. That's all I had on my report.
All right, thank you. Executive session.
I have five minutes.
Good.
Just me?
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning, and the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under K O M A, Mr. Meyer to be included, that we return to open session at twelve fifty-six in this room.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning, and the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under K O M A. But Mr. Meyer to be included, and we return to open session at twelve fifty-six in this room, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion carried.
I have nothing there.
Okay. Future agenda?
You see the list there, we'll be working on the calendar with the calendar committee, get that strategic planning scheduled, and we'll talk about curriculum and what courses we have, and any possible changes. Board policy updates, and the principals' contracts.
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn.
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same side? Motion carried.